Good evening. I'd like to call the January sixth, two thousand and twenty five regular town council meeting to order. And if we can all rise, if we're able, for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Counselor Boganski. Counselor Lewis. Counselor Balboni. Counselor Carey. Mayor Del Nicky. Deputy Mayor Syracusea. Counselor King. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Pendleton.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item four, mayor's remarks. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed a wonderful holiday season. As we step into this new year, let's embrace the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. Together, we can achieve great things and make this truly, make this year truly remarkable. Town offices and the school district will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Our next council meeting will be on January twenty first, Tuesday. And if I can have the council's indulgence, and I would request if everyone is able to stand, if we can stand for a moment of silence for the tragic loss of life on New Year's Day in New Orleans and the passing of the thirty-ninth president of the United States, Jimmy Carter. Thank you. Moving on to item five, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that we adopt the agenda as written.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any changes, additions? Counselor Carey.
I'd like to make a motion to amend item thirteen A. At the crest of town staff, the amount of appropriation should now read two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we're going to adopt the agenda as amended?
Yes. Looking through my packet, or looking through the packet, I didn't see the minutes for the December sixteenth meeting. Okay, so I'm not going to read that. Okay, thank you.
No other changes. Now we're going to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item six, communications and reports from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for not getting a written report out to all of you this last week. I had some challenges getting that done with the holiday, but in terms of a verbal report for all of you, first of all, in your packet is a copy of the succession planning report, which was requested by all of you during my performance evaluation, so that is in your packet. Also, wanted to draw your attention to the tax collector's report, which was sent out to you, I believe, last week. Comparing two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three gram list, we're currently at sixty-two point six-six percent versus in the previous year, we were at sixty-two point five-one percent in terms of overall collections, so they're moving along very well. Additionally, they're working on their tax sale, and that's moving along well as also in terms of getting towards our March sale date. So things are happening in the collector's department. Also, wanted to let the council know that I had the opportunity to actually go out there today and take a look at the Mitchell Fairgrounds. The pavilion that the Rotary, the Rotary Club has made a donation for is complete. The gutters are on, the concrete looks beautiful, the actual facility itself looks great. So that's a great addition to the fairgrounds and should be very helpful for a number of our different civics groups throughout the community as they move their activities over there. So that was an exciting conclusion to that. I do believe the Parks and Recreation Department is working on putting together a ribbon cutting for the springtime, so they're going to save us from having to go out there in the cold and cut a ribbon on it, so keep your eyes out for that. Also, had the chance to work with some staff today and make sure that, we talked about the annual report, which will be coming out by the end of this month, so we're putting the final touches on that, and that'll be coming to all of you very shortly. Again, in terms of getting that done, we're waiting on the final numbers from the auditors and making sure those are all right to get in there. Also, I sent all of you an email today from the Department of Emergency Management related to severe weather protocols. They came from the governor's office. As all of you are aware, it's pretty cold out now. It's going to be getting colder over the next couple of days, so they've put our severe weather protocols in place for anyone in the community who is cold and looking for a place to get warm. They can go to either the community center or the library during working hours as warming locations, and if it's a evening thing or you need a place to sleep, they can use two-one-one to identify the closest location. And lastly, I wanted to recognize the town staff, particularly the staff that have worked over the holiday season. I think it's oftentimes, all of us are home, having dinner with our families for maybe Christmas or New Year's or New Year's Eve, and I think it's oftentimes forgotten that there is always an employee from the town of South Windsor that's working during those times. And I wanted to recognize those individuals who worked during the holiday season for their great work and the sacrifices that they made and the opportunities that they lost with their families, so that we all could have a good holiday and a safe holiday. So that's all I have to report at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any question? Yes, Counselor King. No questions for the town manager? Okay, moving on. Moving on to item seven, public input for items on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item eight, adoption of minutes from previous meeting. Counselor Pendleton.
Approval of the December second, two thousand and twenty-four town council regular meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting on December second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Counselor Pendleton.
Eight B approval of the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four town council special work session meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the special town council work session meeting of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I abstain from, I'm going to abstain from voting on that one.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, for eight B.
Counselor Boganski. Counselor Lewis. Counselor Balboni. Counselor Carey. Mayor Del Nicky. Deputy Mayor Syracusea. Counselor King. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Pendleton. Five yeses and two abstentions.
Okay, and the motion carries. Thank you for that, Counselor Fitzgerald. Okay, we have no eight C. Is that correct? Kathy?
I'm sorry.
Eight C, that's correct. We have, no, eight C, correct? Okay, moving on to item nine, communications liaisons and officers and boards directly responsible to the council. Seeing none. Moving on to item ten, reports from committees. Seeing none. Item eleven, Counselor Carey. Eleven A, please.
Motion to approve eleven A as a first reading on the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Had to think about that one. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Eleven B, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve eleven B one through eleven B five as a second reading on the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to... Eleven B six, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve eleven B six through eleven B twenty as a second reading on the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Eleven C, miscellaneous. There is none. Item twelve, unfinished business. Having none. Item thirteen, new business. Thirteen A, Counselor Boganski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the appropriation of two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars of low SIP funds. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, January twenty-first. Pause there. Can we make an amendment to correct that to January, Tuesday, January twenty... Is that... Tuesday is the twenty... Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at eight P. M. in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, fifteen forty Sullivan Ave, South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the appropriation of two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars of low SIP funds to cover costs associated with the replacement of the town hall roof.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have to make a motion on, we have to amend the date or anything, like a friendly amendment or anything?
No, because, Madam Mayor, he read it as he wanted to, as he made the motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to thirteen B, Counselor Carey.
Resolution amending a previously approved resolution to appoint Terry Parrott as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. Whereas the town council resolution dated December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four incorrectly appointed Terry Parrott as a member of the zoning board of appeals, and whereas the nomination for reporting Ms. Parrott nominated her as a regular member of the zoning board of appeals and not an alternate member, be it resolved that the town council hereby amends the previously approved town council resolution and appoints Terry Parrott as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals with the term and date of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, thirteen C, Counselor Boganski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving refund batch number eleven for ten refunds totaling three thousand three hundred eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves ten refunds, the total of said refunds being three thousand three hundred eighty dollars, seventy-seven cents, and as more fully described in exhibit A.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to thirteen D, passage of ordinance. We have none. And thirteen... That was, okay, that was item fourteen, passage of ordinance, having none. Item fifteen, public input for any matter. Public input for any other matter over which the council has jurisdiction shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any persons. The speakers may address the council on any item over which the council has jurisdiction. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Anyone like to come forward at this time? If you can hit the button on the bottom of the microphone, the base, and provide your name and address, please.
My name is Doug Gugino. I live at fifty-five Chapel Road. So I guess it's a question, do you have jurisdiction? So there's project number eight, one of the road reconstruction projects. So those have been ongoing for a number of years now. The town engineer's office invited the neighborhood to question and answer period mid-December. I sent comments to them and copied all of you on it. There's not a clear answer from the engineering department of what the process is. They presented alternatives. I don't know, there's obviously more than the two alternatives they presented. So my question is to bring your attention to that project. They made a statement that we will get back to in two weeks. I know there's at least one other neighbor that's provided input, but there's a lot of questions. Is it a done deal? Do you have any oversight? Who makes the decision between the two alternatives? That's my, so this is a question of, do they have jurisdiction? And if not, can they still, can you still provide answers through the engineering department of what is the next step? Can you appeal their decision? Can you ask them why they didn't consider another configuration?
Mr. Maniscalco?
So rather than go into details, maybe we can just start at that, at that level.
I mean, I think best thing to do, if you can give me your contact information, I can reach out to you and we can figure out how to, if you've got it there, perfect.
And I've already asked them this.
Okay, so I'll certainly follow up, I'll follow up and get you some information.
But will you follow up on juris, sorry, jurisdiction?
All your questions that you just asked, no, I'll follow up. We'll get back to you.
So I guess I can wait to go, go into my, my impressions of why this is a unique section of road? So we can delay all that. Don't need to go into that. Or we can.
I mean, did you want to, did you want to go through your entire?
Well, I did mail it to you, but I, so there...
If you want to put it on the record, you're more than welcome to.
But I have to read the whole thing then, right? It's already in the record, I guess. Correct?
Madam Mayor, if I might, this is the email from December twentieth, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we are in receipt of it, and obviously, Mr. Maniscalco. But if you want to summarize it, just as the mayor said, to put it on the record, then that's completely fine.
Sure, sure. So there is a project that just got finished, Governor's Road, Governor's Highway. Twenty-six foot wide. They want this either to be thirty foot wi, thirty foot or twenty, no, that's twenty-six, twenty-eight or thirty foot wide through that small section of road. Why different? The, there's this Greenway, which is a non-governmental agency. So somehow, the engineering department got it a tickle and said, let's put a bike path only on this section of Chapel. And let's, the houses are pretty close. I make a statement in here, it might be the, the highest house closeness factor in town, if there is such a ma, the metric. I bet you somebody could do it, right? You would somehow average the homes in there and the right of way to where the town is. This is pretty close. The top of Chapel Road is the Home Depot railroad siding. There's no sidewalk there. There's no bike path anywhere else, so the Greenway is a nice thing. I don't know why this, this section of road is being considered for such a thing, only one in town. Even thirty feet is more than is needed. People already bike on the road, the Greenway bikers. It just, Chapel Road just happens to be near the two ninety-one bridge. So everybody is, wants everybody to roll out from Hartford and bike over the bridge and go wherever that goes. I don't think that's a, people already bike on the road. There is some alternatives that be, that could be considered. From the top of the hill down where the bridge is, I would think you'd want a bike path there, because you're climbing up the hill. Or you're sliding down the hill. So that is, that, I mean, but to really put this into that little section of road, to me seems over the top and inconsistent with anything else considered by the town. There is also consideration of during these projects in this part of town that don't have the water, isn't there some collaboration that could be done while, so would MDC put a distribution line up the street while it's already dug up? So this section of town doesn't have, this road, actually, parts of Old Main Street, if not most of Old Main Street, is, does have MDC. So this is, this is a little funny little road from way back in the day. It still has a tobacco barn right on the corner there by Old Main Street. The one house is right on top of the road. They happen to be across from my house. There's a few other houses that are right on top of the road. You go over the Podunk River and you go straight up, not straight up, it's not that bad. But at the top of the hill is no man's land, and on the other side of no man's land is the railroad siding. And for those of the, in that part of town, you can get stuck. You can get stuck. So it'd be nice to have on Ellington Road and Chapel, a little railroad sign, all the way up there. Anyway, that's, that's a different topic. But the point is, this is a unique road. It makes no sense for it to have this large widening, and that's, in the, that's the bulk of my comments, and we'd like to be able to participate. There's, there's a third and a fourth alternative that can be easily thought of. And that's the end of my comments. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Moving on to, is there any other, oh, yes, thank you, yes, you wanted to read the email from Amy Sada? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Sure. My name is Amy Sada, town resident who resides at seven forty Governor's Highway. I am a town resident, parent of three boys, one of whom graduated in two thousand and eighteen, one who will graduate this spring of two thousand and twenty-five, and my youngest will graduate in two thousand and twenty-six. The proposed facility improvement project will not benefit my own children, but I am one hundred percent in support of the field and recreational improvements that have been proposed at the high school campus. In addition to being a resident and parent, I have worked for municipalities for over twenty-five years in Florida, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, even working as a director of recreation for a period of time, and have seen what recreation and great facilities can do for a town as a whole. It's not just for the athletes. I can tell you that it is a game changer for the athletic department, school... I can tell you that it is a game changer for the athletic department, school, and community as a whole. My husband is a small business owner in town who continually supports the South Windsor community arts, music, sports, and more through sponsorships, opportunities through the schools, recreation department, and booster clubs. There are generous people and local businesses that would love to support this project if fundraising were an option. We have some beautiful state-of-the-art schools, but we are lacking state-of-the-art athletic facilities. I love going to other towns to watch my kids play sports, as it means I don't have to leave work early to catch a game, as all away games we play for football are at 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. They have awesome facilities with actual restrooms, ample parking, evening games with lights, bands, dance teams, cheerleaders, great sound systems. It becomes a safe, fun evening out for kids and adults of all ages. But when it's a home game, I have to use my vacation time to be able to attend. I can guarantee not all parents have the ability to support their children at 3:45 p.m. game times. But this project is so much more than being about sports. This project addresses so much more. How many people have been hit by a car in the morning at the high school, at the high school? How many car accidents in the area? How many kids late to school due to the backup? How many complaints, how many complaints on the grass fields and closed fields due to poor field conditions? Grass fields, we know, are a challenge to maintain, remained closed during the off-season, require us to limit usage during the practice week based on weather conditions. The list goes on, but this project seems to benefit all and addresses all the complaints that have been going on for far too long. This project would become an asset to the entire school and surrounding community that can also be used for revenue generation, hosting local and regional events. It would be so beneficial and an honor to have a premier high school athletic complex for our town, a safe traffic pattern for our students and staff, additional athletic facilities for our young and old, and I would vote for it even though my kids won't benefit directly. Thank you for considering moving this project forward to referendum. Regards, Amy Sada.
Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald. And do we have another one that we're going to read? Counselor Boganski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is from Jeff Trachtenberg, 1540 South Main, Sullivan Ave., excuse me, 1540 Sullivan Ave., South Windsor. His address wasn't on there, I just looked it up.
I was going to say that wasn't asked to be read into the record.
No, but I think there's some.
But don't we have the option? I'm just trying to accommodate. Well, they asked me if it could be read into the record. And, and I stated it's not being asked to be read into the record. Go ahead, Counselor Boganski.
Thank you. We relocated to South Windsor in 2005 because of its strong school system. At the time, we didn't have children, but like, oops, excuse me, but like many others, we understood the importance of educational quality when choosing where to live. I think we can all agree that the quality of education is a primary reason families choose South Windsor. With that in mind, I'd like to better understand the referendums we're facing now and in the coming years. One, a referendum for a lighted football field, 8 million. Two, Parks and Recreation expansion improvements estimated between 16 million and 80 million, depending on the scope. Three, elementary school portables, the cost is currently unknown. Four, middle and high school expansions, estimated cost unknown, possibly up to 200 million. Dr. Carter has mentioned the need for new middle and high schools, but residents may be resistant to such a large referendum. In the next five years, we may bond tens of millions of dollars, yet we still lack concrete estimates for additional elementary school portables or for expansions at the middle and high school levels. Could the cost for these school expansions range from 50 million to 200 million? It's unclear. According to the town's projections, enrollment is expected to increase by 424 students from 5122 to 5546 over the next five years. This would require nearly 17 new classrooms ensuing an average class size of 25 students. How will we accommodate these 17 new classrooms? When will we see a referendum for this, and how much will it cost taxpayers? It's also doing, it's also important to recognize that our taxes are set to rise. Based on the September 2024 Quad Meeting, tax increases will be as follows. 3.99% in 2025, 7.57% in 2026, 5.84% in 2027, 5.86% in 2028. For a home appraised at $350,000, this means taxes will increase from $12,061 to $14,539, a $2,478 rise between 2025 and 2028. This does not include any additional spending on schools or other unforeseen expenses. For example, a home with property taxes of $9,045 will see an increase to $10,904, a $1,859 increase. So why haven't we received any estimates from Dr. Carter about the cost of necessary school expansions and updates? How can we make informed decisions about future spending if we don't have a clear understanding of these costs? It is essential that we hold referendums on school expansions, the lighted football field, the Parks and Rec improvements, so we can plan and budget responsibly. Finally, we need to address the issue of harassment in our schools. Watching last month's Town Council meeting was deeply unsettling. I cannot understand how our residents can focus on advocating for a lighted field complex when just moments earlier, two speakers shared deeply personal and heartbreaking stories. A young woman spoke about her experience with sexual harassment and her fear for her safety, while a mother read a letter detailing disturbing experiences of her child and another former student. These were serious allegations of inappropriate behavior by both students and staff. Why isn't the Board of Education addressing these accusations? The Town Council should urge the BOE to conduct a full investigation to these claims and to revise the sexual harassment policy, as clearly not functioning as it should. We need to send a clear message to both the BOE and the residents. Our focus should not be on a lighted field when there are unresolved issues of sexual harassment in our schools. The safety and well-being of our children must be our priority. Once we have a clear understanding of the school's future needs for expansions and updates, we can have a productive discussion about lighted field and Parks and Recreation improvements.
Thank you. Any other communications under item 15?
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to say I was against reading that into the record because of the misinformation that's in there, and our duty and responsibility of controlling the Board of Ed is not on us. We are two different forms of government, we're government and they're the Board of Ed. There's a lot of misinformation in there, and folks need to get their facts straight before we read anything into the record.
Thank you. Counselor King?
The only thing I was going to add is, I believe, Counselor Boganski, you said you didn't have his address? Because I know, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine. Just because we need to have it for the record, and it's. Oh, you did, okay, okay. Because I have, this is Jeff's letter, correct?
Yes.
It's 11, 111 Oxford Drive.
Yeah, so just, just for the record, you know, when we do these, we need to make sure that we have a name and an address, and it's at 111 Oxford Drive, South Windsor, Connecticut, 06074.
Thank you, Counselor King. Moving on to item 16, communications from the council? Seeing none. Moving on to item 17, executive session, having none. Item 18, motion for adjournment?
Motion opposed.
Motion to close.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Meeting adjourned.